At this time, we'll call the court to order, and I'd like to ask Commissioner Brian Booth if he would say the invocation.
Good Lord, as we come for you later, have my Father watch over this meeting. Have my Father watch over our county and our country during the time of the Father's we go through this coronavirus, have my Father and all the sick and afflicted go with us throughout this meeting. I pray amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Robertson?
Here.
Commissioner Tackett?
Here.
Commissioner Booth?
Here. We have a quorum, and we are ready to proceed, and I'd like to ask Ms. Tammy Riley, who is the Director of the Pike County Health Department, she'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States and America, to the Republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. So the first item on the agenda today is an update by Ms. Riley, who is the Director of the Pike County Health Department regarding the COVID-19 pandemic, and she is going to update us and give us the most recent information. We have been very fortunate, in my opinion, due to social distancing, that we have not had the number of cases here that had been forecast. Of course, we're still getting new cases, and we want to remind everyone, if you look at the court meeting, we have limited access. The number of people has been limited. We're still practicing social distancing. We've separated out everyone. We're using a lot of extra care and making sure that everything's sanitized, and it has really caused a lot of inconvenience for people, but the inconvenience pales in comparison to seeing a significant number of COVID-19 cases in Eastern Kentucky. So, Ms. Riley, you have the floor.
The itinerary, the agenda, is I am going to give an update on confirmations of cases of novel coronavirus for Pike County, but I also want to explain to the public, we get a lot of questions about public safety and information that's not disclosed, and I wanted to explain what happens just very briefly on epidemiology perspective and reporting, and how HIPAA comes into play, and try to give the best update I can on the Kroger drive-through event that occurred last week, and some upcoming information about testing with PMC, and explain about what is happening with the numbers, Judge, and how I feel about it, and what the experts are telling me for Eastern Kentucky, and review the 5C plan, which has been our message from day one, and to remind Pike County that we still are an operating public health department, so talk about some of the programs that still are in place, but currently today, as of 5:00 PM yesterday, there were about a little over 4,545, 39 cases in the state of Kentucky with 235 deaths. That's about a 5% mortality rate, which is what we're seeing on a nationwide level for cases, mortality to number of confirmed cases. Globally, I believe that number's a little higher. There's over 3 million cases globally, and we reached 1 million, I believe, yesterday. We went over 1 million cases, and I got that information from kycovid19.ky.gov. I do encourage individuals to get their information from reliable sources, you know, like their fiscal court, like these meetings, the health department. No better place on a pandemic than go to your local health department, because by law, that's where those cases are reported. So to give an update for Pike County, we are currently, we have 13 confirmed cases, which, as the judge referenced, that's very, an optimistic number. I'm very pleased to be here to tell you that today. When I reported last, the time I reported fiscal court, the projections were much, much higher, and I was basing that on a ratio by what the state was projecting as well, and the numbers at the state level have been a lot lower than what they anticipated. So we have 13 cases. Of those 13, two were hospitalized, four have recovered, and we did lose two Pike County citizens, let's not forget that. Two people have lost their lives to COVID-19 in Pike County. We have seven recovering from home, and what's interesting is six of those 13 were completely asymptomatic. And, you know, and we talk a lot about recovery. 80% of people do fine when they are diagnosed with COVID-19, 80% have mild, no or mild symptoms, very little or mild symptoms. It's 20% that have those complications, and as we're seeing on a national and state level, about a 5% mortality rate. So that is an update on what's happening. With the symptoms, CDC did add some new symptoms. I wanted to make everyone aware of that. So there are some new symptoms, like loss of taste or smell, that was added, sore throat, headache, muscle pain. Originally, when we first started talking about COVID-19, it was shortness of breath, fever, and cough, it was those three. So they're seeing more and more, and locally, we have seen GI upset. So there has been some GI upset, and that's not listed on the CDC, but I did want to make you aware that we do see that. Another thing that we've seen in Pike County, a little similar at the state and national level, is it's been 46% male and 54% female, and normally, statistically, with something like this with a poor outcome, the males have the higher ratio. So this is a little unusual. It's small numbers, but at the same time, it's following suit with the rest of the state and the country. And then by age breakdown, I want to remind everyone that coronavirus, you know, the novel coronavirus does not see age or really gender for that matter. There's no county lines or state lines or age, and you can see my graph that of the 13, four of the individuals were in their 20s, and one individual's in their 40s, we had two in their 50s, two in their 60s, and four in their 70s. So there's been a wide range of age that had been diagnosed with COVID-19, so it is not age-specific, and there's a misconception there, Judge, that in early on, we warned that those 60 and over would have poorer outcomes. That did not mean they would be the only ones to, or they would be more likely to have COVID-19. It's just as of those that did have COVID-19, that age range would have poorer outcomes. It knows no age. There's no age or county or political or religious, you know, lines for a virus. In the next graph, you can see that although the numbers are low, and this is something I want to talk about just for a minute, and you may have a question or two, but we talk about the fact that we have done an excellent job in Pike County. I've said it over and over, I'm very proud of the Pike County citizens, and the leadership, like yourself, Judge, took action, very early aggressive action. I was extremely appreciative of that. You did what was best for the outcomes for the community, and people listened, they really, and they still are listening. I said the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and sometimes we notice those that are complaining, but if you watch, and I watch very closely, people are complying, people care about their neighbors and others. We care about each other in Pike County, and I appreciate the decisions you made early on. I want to thank you for that. If you look at the graph, what you can see, it's just in this past week, since Sunday, you know, I announced three cases Sunday, three cases Monday, one today. Yesterday, Kentucky River District, and that is Perry County, is one of the counties in Kentucky River District, announced nine new cases, seven of which were in Perry County. Floyd County now has 10 new cases. A couple of first responders were just announced. So what I'm seeing is, yes, at the state level, we're all doing a great job, absolutely, and I want to commend everyone on that, but I am here to very strongly advise us, it is not the time to let our guards down or relax our behaviors. And now, I know at the state level, they have these phases of relaxation that they're doing very slowly and carefully, but what we are experiencing in Eastern Kentucky, and what I see is a slow spread from central coming east, and I think that we have about a three-week at a minimum lag, and we've done very well. I'm extremely proud of the community for listening and complying, but this is not the time to let our guard down. That is a concern of mine, and I feel very strongly about that, and I want to warn others, you know, we do have the 5C plan in place, and we need to follow that. It was good social distancing. You know, the 5C plans, do your civic duty, and when you're out in public now, starting May 11th, you need to have a cloth face mask covering, and you need to stay at least six feet away from others. It's socially irresponsible to get within that six-foot space of someone with whom you don't live. So do your civic duty, and stay calm, use reliable resources, and then, of course, clean, cover, and contain. You know, clean your hands twice as often, twice as long, clean high-traffic touch areas. I cleaned this entire area before I sat down. I'm sure you had someone do that, but just to ensure, out of habit, I cleaned the chair and I cleaned this table with an alcohol-based cleaner before I sat down. So you want to clean areas that you know you're going to be touching, and then, you know, cover your coughs and sneezes, cover your face again with cloth masks when in public, stay home if you're sick. So that is my update regarding coronavirus. I think there's some misconceptions about epidemiology and contact tracing. We have 13 cases, but did you know that there is close to 200 contacts that are traced and monitored from those 13 positive cases? So the regional epidemiologists and the nurse administrator, it's a reportable by law, it's a reportable disease, so we get what's called an Epi200 form via fax usually, but it comes, we get that information. And the regional epidemiologist, Stephanie Bentley, the nurse administrator, they start working those patients and their contacts, and there's an investigative process that's in place. But there's also something called HIPAA that we've all heard about, and it's the Patients' Privacy Act, that, you know, we owe the patient their privacy, and it's the law that we maintain their privacy. So there's a balance with public health. I make blanket announcements when it's necessary in order to protect the public, but if it's not necessary, like, Judge, if you didn't need to know the information to protect the public or someone else's health, then I'm not going to give you that information. I wouldn't, I wouldn't give anyone, patients, private information unless it was to protect your own health. So I've had individuals ask, well, how many people are being, you know, if we announce a new, well, where have they been, and who have they been in contact with? We can't disclose that information unless they've been in a business where there was sustained interaction between them and others that would cause me, you know, concern to make a public announcement. So I just wanted to make that clear, that it's a HIPAA issue, but we do, there are almost 200 people out there who know that who they are, that we are monitoring, and they are watching their health, and they know they've been in contact with a COVID-positive patient. So I just wanted to make the public aware of that, and a lot of hard work goes in behind the scenes with the health department to ensure that that happens, to keep everyone safe, and usually, you don't hear about what we're doing, because we prevent or protect. And so if you, if you don't hear about what we're doing, it's a good thing we're doing our job well. But we're still, you know, we're doing WIC and HANS services, we're still doing family planning, we've just modified our practices. We have a full staff of nurses and environmentalists that are out there protecting the public. We've actually provided wraparound services to positive COVID patients and to protect the public so that they could remain home, and I don't know if the public's aware of that, but we have done that. The staff there does an excellent job, and I've had a lot of questions about last week's Kroger drive-through testing. It was very successful. Now, the slide you'll see, those numbers, I do not have a final comprehensive report from them, but just based on information the governor's released and others have given to me, I know that we had over 900 show, they said 500 in some on Thursday, the 23rd, and I can confirm that I have four positives from that test site. That tells us a couple of things. Yes, we've done an excellent job containing, but I also know that we've received other positives, you know, just in the last few days. Some of those positives were asymptomatic, and they did not know that they were positive. And again, we did emergency management, Doug Tackett did the setup for that event, and he did an excellent job. It was very successful, and I want to commend him, but I also want something, I had a lot of people ask, can, where can I go to get tested, or I want to do that, but I missed the opportunity. So I'm working in conjunction with Pikeville Medical Center, and we're going to be releasing some really good information for the community about ongoing drive-through testing tomorrow. So I want to make the public aware of that. It's coming, and that opportunity will be local and managed locally, so the results will be a little more quickly available for everyone, and they'll be receiving their results from their local health department or from their provider, from probably Dr. Fauci across from Pikeville Medical. That's my update.
The last slide was the 10 rules to reopening a business under...
Yes, yes.
Would you, would you go through that with the public to let them know as we open businesses back up, what is going to be expected of the businesses? All of us recognize that we can't keep the economy shut down. It's already, I saw today in the United States, 30 million people out of work. 30 million people. That's amazing. There's only 4 million people in Kentucky, if that puts it in perspective. As you know, between the fiscal court and the jail, we saw layoffs of about 41 people in the last court meeting, and 26 of those were here, 15 at the jail, and it's because of the revenue issues that the county's facing. And working with the jail administration, we're going to do the best we can and provide the best services we can, but all of us recognize that we have to open the economy back up, but you can't just say, okay, we're back open for business without having restrictions, because I think you're absolutely correct. We've seen more cases in the last week than we did in the last month.
Right.
So if people relax their guard, forget about social distancing, they stop washing their hands and using hand sanitizer, those things, I am concerned that we haven't peaked here yet. I'm afraid that we're going to see a substantial increase in the cases, but could you talk about what we need to do in terms of when businesses open back up, what they're going to be required to do?
Well, it's the governor's 10-point plan for Healthy at Work, and I brought that slide because it was one of the points I was going to make, that we're still a working, operating health department, and what is normally outside of our scope is to guide businesses under these types of circumstances. We work with restaurants and hotels normally, and things of that nature, not normally like your Lowe's and Rule Kings type businesses, but we have found ourselves with this role and responsibility. So one of the things we're doing is providing guidelines, and the 10-point rule is an overall plan, and then individualized sectors like faith-based and schools, they have their own unique characteristics, and if you go to kycovid19.ky.gov, which I highly recommend that anyone out there making decisions for their business or sector, go there, you can go, click on Healthy at Work, and then you can find specific, like, if you're a school, if you're a government entity, if you're industrial, you can pick your sector. It's not an exact science, but you, there's some great guidelines there. But on the main landing page of Healthy at Home, there's this 10-point plan, and it's a starting point for all businesses. But number one, they want you to telework wherever possible. Like, we're live streaming right now, the public has access to what's happening in the fiscal court without needing to be here physically. So telework, take your employees, let them work from home, telework where possible, and do a phased return to work. It's like the faucet, you know, if it's dripping, don't turn it all the way on full blast, you know, maybe slowly turn the water up. So that's what the government, public health officials is recommending for the, so we can monitor and watch what the outcomes of these slow phases, and this is only part one of three of Phase One. But also, and I highly recommend onsite temperatures, we've been doing that at the health department. I believe most businesses have been taking their employees' temperatures when they report for a shift and ask a few questions, some health checks. Early on, we asked about travel, but that's not necessary any longer. Universal mask and other necessary PPE, depending on, you know, again, the industry. I have an office, I'm by myself, you know, on my floor, plenty of space between me and Jim Cecil, so I don't wear my mask in my office, but once I'm going into an area where it might be difficult for me to maintain social distancing, then I'm going to wear the mask. So if you're in an office setting, even if you're six feet apart, but you're going to get up and walk a lot during the day, and you might be brushing or getting close to being within that six foot, just wear the mask. If you're public-facing, you need to have the mask on all day on your shift if you're engaging with the public. Close common areas, break rooms, common areas, don't have them, or, you know, people can take their breaks elsewhere besides being in a common area. Enforce social distancing. It is, it is an obligation of the employer, the business, to ensure that their customer base, I've said this over and over, is complying. And if their customer base is not complying, it's not the customers who are going to be reprimanded, it's not public health, or it is, it is the responsibility of the business owner in this circumstance to ensure that their customer base, their audience, if it's students, parents, customers, congregants, congregation members, that they are maintaining social distancing. Limit face-to-face meetings. I noticed you, you've always had sanitizer and wipes and plenty of cleaner here. Have those readily available for your employees and your, your audience, your customers. And then make special accommodations. So you have to keep in mind that, you know, you may not, everybody may not be able to wait out in the car if you're doing curbside service, or if, like, your healthcare, you know, they may not be able to text, and so you have to be prepared for your special, you know, accommodation audience and have a testing plan. So when we start turning the water up on the faucet that I referenced earlier, and if, you know, cases, people start getting sick, we've got to have a testing plan. It's one of the reasons why the timing of this drive-through that's going to start next week is very important for this community, and just ramping up testing capacity, you know, for all the hospitals. ARH has been working with Gravity Diagnostics and the Department of Public Health facilitating tests throughout the area for weeks and weeks now, and private providers have ramped up on their availability to test, and so we're all kind of coming together and ramping up testing ability, but that's a very important part of the plan, because once we start turning the water up, if individuals start getting sick, we have to be able to test them quickly, contain, then let my, you know, let the public health do what we do, which is contain them, investigate, quarantine, contain those around them that maybe could have been in contact, and it doesn't spread, and you can continue to turn the water up slowly if you can test and contain, if that makes sense. But that's part of the 10-point plan for Phase One, and part one, actually, of Phase One. Phase One has like three main dates. And, you know, all, and back to the budget and financial, the economy and the financial impact of this, I don't know that there's a single sector of society that hasn't experienced a heavy financial burden due to, I mean, when healthcare experiences a burden, I never thought I would see the day that healthcare would see a financial burden. So it's just unprecedented waters.
Well, you know, when you see physicians laid off...
Yes.
You know, one of the biggest employers, I saw the Pikeville Medical Center had furloughed 200. ARH has furloughed employees, and it should not come, you know, and I've tried to make this point to the public, that when you see 30 million people laid off, companies like Disney that lay off 100,000 people at one time, coal companies shut down, you know, we're seeing a significant impact to the economy, not here just locally, but nationally, and if people don't pay attention to these social distancing guidelines and things, I'm afraid that it will just prolong the economic recovery and make the problems that much worse.
It's so important, while we're in this phase, the first part of Phase One, these three dates coming up, May 11th, May 20th, May 25th, you know, some of, some of these actions may not even be feasible for us in Eastern Kentucky, and the governor and at the national level, they have advised, you know, communities that you will have unique situations. This has impacted the economy from the federal level, state level, and also at the local level. And so Healthy at Work is as a plan that we're going to slowly turn the water on, but then public health officials will monitor health outcomes and provide information, and hopefully we can manage this so we can start turning the economy back on, because yes, everyone, everyone has been affected. Like I said, when, I never thought I would see the day that healthcare would be seeing such a heavy financial burden, so it's, it's affected everyone, but if we don't go slowly and listen to public health officials as we go through these phases, then it's going to be a major setback, and not just in health outcomes, but in financial, for the economy, just for society in general.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions? I'm sure that we've had, the court's had a lot of discussions over the ramifications of the pandemic, and, you know, I've talked in, over the last year, in three or four months, even when I was running for office and these gentlemen were running for office, we talked about the implications, you know, the situation the county was facing, and there's no point in rehashing the financial situation we were in. The public knows where we are, where we were when we came in, but obviously, the pandemic has made it much worse. And what I've tried to, again, reiterate is the, the less people pay attention to what they're supposed to be doing, the deeper the hole's going to be in terms of the financial loss.
Right.
And you see so many people out of work, and, you know, our hearts go out to all the people here. I mean, it's not just the county employees, but we haven't seen the last of the layoffs yet, and when you see 30 million Americans out of work, I mean, that's, it's really almost to the point of being a second Great Depression. And, you know, air constraints here at the, at the government level, the same as yours, is your revenue's limited, and, you know, if you don't have money, you can't spend it, and, you know, a lot of families are going to feel this for many years, and, you know, again, it's just important that we all work together, and people do their civic, I think the civic duty was the word that, or term that Dr. Fauci used.
Civic duty, civic duty.
And we've...
Together, we really truly are in it together when we say that. It is literal. We are all, what I do is going to affect others, not just their family's health outcomes, but their family's, you know, socioeconomic status, you know, for years.
You know, we were looking at just that your numbers, when you have roughly half the people diagnosed in Pike County is asymptomatic, and it's really alarming that somebody could be carrying a disease that they may not even have any symptoms, but could give it to someone else who ends up getting critically ill and dying from it, and there's really no way to predict how people are going to react. I even mentioned here, I have a friend of mine from Knott County, he's my age, his wife is a healthcare provider, and she caught the disease from a patient, apparently, and nearly died, was on a ventilator for about two weeks. So I think the point you made about, you know, you can't tell because age doesn't matter, county lines don't matter, you know, this disease affects people differently, and, you know, with the luck this court's had, if one of us caught it, probably a bad outcome. Everything else seems to be, we've not caught too many good breaks in the last year here, so, but, you know, it's a, nobody alive in Pike County probably has seen a circumstance like we're going through, or at least would recall it from, you know, the last pandemic over 100 years ago.
Not that they would remember.
Yeah. If you do have someone that was alive when it happened, and I think I had mentioned that, you know, my great-grandmother died from the Spanish flu when my grandfather was six years old, and it was, you know, we just don't want to see it ravage our community. We've got a lot of vulnerable people, and, you know, being married to a healthcare provider, you know, I'm concerned for her health, I'm concerned for, you know, all the first responders in particular.
Yes.
We're going to meet with all the fire chiefs later this evening, and I want to thank the health department, and if you and Jim would carry the message back to the, you know, the reason we don't have more cases in Pike County, in my opinion, is twofold. One, people have done their civic duty by and large, not everyone, but most people.
Most people.
Most people understand the reason for the restrictions. A lot of people are wanting to open the economy back up, and there's, I don't think there's anybody that doesn't want to open the economy back up, but it has to be done the right way so that we don't overwhelm the healthcare system. Dr. Fauci was talking about there's like, there will be a second wave. I'm afraid we've not seen our wave yet, because...
That's my concern, yes.
And then the other reason I think we've, we've not seen a lot of cases is because the health department has done such a great job of trying to educate people and enforce the social distancing restrictions and so forth.
Well, it's an entire team. There's an entire building of employees, like I said, a nurse administrator, epidemiologist, and a team of environmentalists, and the HANS and WIC, and those individuals are still working frontline to keep the community safe and protected and prevent, you know, first and prevent, you know, further types of issues and outbreaks. So we've continued doing our job in, in midst of a pandemic, and they, they've done a fabulous job. But I appreciate it, and I will make them aware.
Gentlemen? Commissioner Robertson?
Tammy, I want to thank you and the Health Department for what you're doing. And I hope everybody that's watching that on TV listens to what rules we have on this, and they'll follow these rules. And I, I just, I'm like the judge, you know, I, I don't know if we've met the level yet that we're going to get. And we sure don't want to let this get out of control and go into the fall of the year. And, you know, they're, they're saying that might be when the second wave is, or whatever. But I just want to thank you all for what you do.
Thank you, thank you very much.
He was talking about next week doing some more testing. There going to be some multiple places throughout the county. Are there going to just be one more week, or are you looking at a couple of weeks, different areas, or?
Oh, no, that's a good question. Actually, this week, it, it will be Pikeville Medical Center was, is in conjunction with the Health Department. It's a collaboration, and there'll be more details tomorrow in a press release. But it will be at one, one location. It'll start on, I believe, on Tuesday of next week for the general public. And until, you know, I'm told otherwise, it will be a weekly, ongoing, drive-through test center. Anyone who wants a test could come get a test. It will all be under Dr. Fauci, Fauci Allacross's orders, so no doctor's order will be needed. It's an arrangement with the Department of Public Health, Gravity Diagnostics, UPS Healthcare, and then Pikeville Medical Center stepped up to help me with that, make that happen.
And I just want to thank you all for keeping us up, up to date on it, and, and the hospitals too.
Jason, appreciate it.
I want to, I want to ask you one more question.
Yes.
On the, on, on the testing that's going to be done next week at Pikeville Medical Center, should you have the symptoms before you're checked, or is it just a good thing to be checked?
Well, that's a good question. One of the, one of the priorities is, are you living in an area where COVID-19 is spreading? And we can all answer, yes, we are. And I know most people have mild symptoms. What I do urge is that people not, don't refrain from taking a test because you don't feel like you're very sick. Even if you just have had a headache, or there has been some asymptomatic. So if you want a test, go get a test. You don't need a doctor's orders. So, so anyone can go get a test. And, you know, as, as Judge Jones mentioned, almost half of our current cases were asymptomatic. That was a good question, thank you.
I just, I think y'all doing an outstanding job with, at the Health Department. What worries me is though, is just as we're opening back up, is like you said, people get relaxed, they're, especially when they open, I seen where, well, May 20th, they're talking about opening churches back up and stuff like that. That's what kind of got me kind of concerned, is people get kind of relaxed, and then we'll see a spike in cases and all.
Probably the, for, for Eastern Kentucky, that May 20th date for retail and places of worship is where I have my most concern. That's nine days after the May 11th, which is the first date for Phase One, for the Part One of Phase One. So I do have some concern there. I know that, that those sectors are working with the governor's office with plans and some recommendations based on their unique, you know, characteristics. And I've heard things like the, I, I'm waiting on, there's going to be additional guidance and verbiage. But I've heard like that places of worship would be like at 30% capacity, those under the age of 60, you know, things of that nature. So there is going to be some more guidance. And what will happen is on May 11th, when we start manufacturing and construction and, and auto and, and those industries, public health officials are going to be watching very closely what happens. And again, that's why the, the ramping up of testing right now is so, so important for us here in Eastern Kentucky. And if we do that very slowly, and people will listen, wear the cloth mask, keep, you know, keep away six feet, do the social distancing, and we don't see a spike, we're good to go. Then we'll slowly go into Part Two of Phase One, and we can slowly turn the economy back up, back up, as the judge referenced. And that'll be a good thing for all of us. I want that, everyone wants that. But, you know, there's, there's a price to pay if we do it too fast, or we don't listen and we don't do it carefully.
That's the part that kind of bothers me, is people not listen or don't pay attention, and then we have a big spike into it.
That, that's my main message these days. I'm saying it over and over. Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you very much, and we'll have you back at the next court meeting if necessary. I do want to clarify one thing. We've had some folks contact us about why we're not doing more briefings. And, you know, the governor's doing a daily briefing, talking about a lot of the same issues. The president's been doing a daily briefing with the Coronavirus Task Force. And it's my opinion that we should not have press conferences, we, we can't do one every time there's an announced case. But if there's any significant change or information that the public needs, then we can do a press conference. One of the reasons we've not had a press conference is we've not had any cases to really amount to a lot. We've been able to, as you said, flatten the curve, and, and if you look at the fact that we've only had 13 cases, and six of those are asymptomatic.
Right.
We've really been lucky on this.
We have, we have.
People keep doing what they're doing, adhering to the CDC guidelines, adhering to the social distancing and, and hygiene recommendations. We may be able to avoid this, and I'll talk about it in a little bit when we talk about the, the budget that I'm going to present, how that could be an opportunity if, you know, if we, if this region. The pandemic has shown that large metropolitan urban areas are very susceptible to pandemics. And this probably won't be the last pandemic. I mean, we know that these, you know, SARS came out a few years ago, that was blunted pretty early, MERS, another coronavirus. There likely will be other diseases, just like there was 100 years ago. And I mentioned this once in a court meeting. The National Strategic Stockpile that we're getting a lot of the PPE and ventilators and things like that from was created by George W. Bush, because he read the same book that I'm actually been reading about the 1917, 18 pandemic. And he was so alarmed, and this was after 9/11, he was handling the War on Terror, they were in Iraq, they were in Afghanistan. But when he read that book, it was so alarming to him. And President Bush recognized that the country was not ready for this. And that's where this whole pandemic response team came from. But where I'm going with that is, our area, you know, we've lost a lot of jobs in the mining industry, we've seen a lot of people leave. But if we can develop some industrial sites here, it may be a way to bring some national companies in, because unlike urban areas where businesses have been substantially shuttered or seen substantial impacts on their ability to do business, it's not really happened here. And there may be an opportunity for us to do something like that on the, on a larger stage to convince people that, you know, rural America, Central Appalachia is not a bad place to do business, because.
I, I talked about that the last time I was here, about our health outcomes, and that, you know, we had poor rankings, but mostly it was due to controllable factors when you looked at water and air and the environment. You know, we live in a very beautiful place, we have the luxury of not being densely populated. That is a big advantage that we have. And Dr. Stack referenced it weeks ago, it's like, when you congregate, you, if you live in a rural area, you take that advantage away. But we do have that advantage, that we live in a very beautiful place, a lot of resources, you know, people who care about each other, who, you know, I, I've been very proud of the community. And we've, we've also learned that, you know, technology is something that is, we're much more comfortable, I think many people out there are more comfortable with technology and, and teleworking and, and things of that nature that could also be to our advantage. So if anything good at all could be said for a pandemic, is we realize that there's technology and resources that we have, have had, that we're now making much more use of, and even at the Health Department, we have.
And, you know, I think that goes hand in hand with the fact that we've seen our schools get better and better.
Yes.
You know, we've got, if we can continue to see improvements in education, we can continue to keep people in school, we can, you know, increase the number of educated people here, people going to college and staying here, you know, there are some opportunities here, and we're going to, this court's going to focus on that, and we're going to talk a little bit about those. But, you know, I, I do think that this pandemic has shown that our area may not be as susceptible as, as other areas, and that may, may give us a way to market Eastern Kentucky and Central Appalachia to the rest of the world.
I hope, and pray for that. And if everyone will listen, it could very well be our outcome.
Ma'am, thank you very much. Do you have anything else?
Out of the 900 or so that was tested last week, is all those numbers back in, or is that just some of the?
That is just information that I have, based on information the governor's released, and I do not have a final report from the Kroger's Little Clinic.
Okay.
But I wanted to provide an update, because many people have been asking. I, I was not managing, I'm very grateful for that resource, but that was not something the Local Health Department managed.
Okay.
Department of Public Health facilitated that. What's coming in the upcoming weeks will be locally managed, and so those results and that information will be a lot, yeah. Quickly, we'll get a turnaround on that information, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jeannie, I need copies of the, I have the fax from the maintenance garage on the equipment update. If we could get copies for the members of the court as well? Are they in there? Okay. You already got them? I didn't know, I didn't know if they had been copied yet. Wanted to make sure that the court had those. The next item on the agenda is adoption of a resolution of the Pike County. I'm, I mean, let me go out of order here, because there's one I'm going to jump to. As you know, let's jump to item four on the agenda, please. We've received notice from the Department of Local Government this week that the way that we were accounting for recaptured coal severance tax money, which would be money that we would earn, for instance, on the Coca-Cola lease, or that we would have on projects that came back in, money that didn't get spent, was held. If you look at our financial statement, it's under the LGEA recaptured account. And the way that they have interpreted the regulations is that any time there's more than $100,000 in that account, then that money has to go back to the Department of Local Government to be held and administered by them in the LGEDF Single County Coal Severance Tax Account. In a way, it makes it easier for the fiscal court, since Frankie wouldn't have to account for those, it'd be something off of our balance sheet. But it also makes it easier and more flexible for us to use the money in the LGEDF Coal Severance Tax Account. Because if they're in the recaptured account, you're limited to the statutory uses of the coal severance tax money, which predominantly is industrial development. And while we have some needs that we're going to talk about in a minute, the, the way that statute was drafted back in the 70s was very narrowly tailored and, and drafted to limit the uses of coal severance tax money. And that's why the legislature back in the late 90s and early 2000s started doing the line items of that. So what this does is, because we have been requested to remit those funds in the recaptured bank account to the Department of Local Government, we have it on the agenda, and the item on the agenda is authorization to remit all funds in the Pike County's LGEDF recaptured bank account to the Kentucky Department of Local Government to be put into our single county account. We're not losing the money, it's just going to be administered by Frankfurt. And like I said, it will give us more flexibility on how those monies could be used. It's been done this way, Frankie, for several years, it's been on there. In prior administrations, probably going back at least to the Rutherford administration, it was that way. It was done that way during the Deskins administration, and they didn't do anything wrong. But for some reason, even the last two governors, their administrations didn't say anything about this. But I was contacted by Matt Stevens, who's General Counsel in the Department of Local Government. Matt was my General Counsel when I was in the State Senate in the Democratic Leadership Office, and he called me and told me about this issue. So we need to go ahead and take care of that. Is there a motion to authorize the transfer of the LGEDF recaptured bank accounts to the Kentucky Department for Local Government to be deposited in our single county coal severance account?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Okay.
We have a second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question or discussion about this line item? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tagg?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. So now we'll go back to item two. We had talked about, you know, I'll talk about it more in the budget that I'm going to present to you gentlemen in a few minutes. In the budget, we have a line item, or actually, three line items for appropriations for the Wolf Pit Industrial Site. We have already contracted with Palmer Engineering to do the infrastructure at the Wolf Pit Industrial Site. And that's, I've talked about on the campaign trail, I've talked about for the last year and four months, we're the largest geographical county in Kentucky, and we do not have an industrial site. Now, it's not about pointing the finger at past administrations, but I talked about the need in this court, each one of you talked about the need to try to create jobs here, and it's sort of hard to do that without an industrial site. We have the deed for the property at Wolf Pit that this court received from the state last year. We have been diligently working with the Big Sandy Area Development District, Ms. Hall, to get the plans in place, to get the infrastructure. And this industrial site is the closest one to Pikeville, it's the closest one to the city of Pikeville's industrial site. So hopefully, the two sites can work together. If one site gets a company in, maybe it helps spin something off. We also will be moving forward as soon as the road project is done with the bridge at Beaver, to move the John Moore Branch site forward. That's a larger site, and it's going to take more money. But we are working to get an Economic Development Administration grant of $2,481,210 in an AML pilot grant in the amount of $1,927,244. And if you look at the draft budget I have on the budget revenues on page four of six, those two items are set out, the AML pilot Wolf Pit Industrial Park Phase Two, and the EDA Wolf Pit Industrial Park Phase One. We have to come up with a match, we have to match those. And we have on the agenda a motion to adopt a resolution of the Pike County Fiscal Court authorizing the filing of a Kentucky Local Government Economic Development Fund, LGEDF, House Bill 200, project proposal, grant application, in the amount of $620,303 in local government economic development, single county funds, to be utilized as matching funds for an EDA grant for EAA assistance to coal county, I'm sorry, to coal communities for the development of infrastructure at the Wolf Pit Industrial and Technology Park, and approval to execute all related documents by the judge executive. So what that means is, our grant match would be the $620,303 that would come out of the single county coal severance tax account. Now, some folks may say, if you've got $620,000, why did you have to lay people off? Well, the $620,000 is economic development money that can only be used for economic development under state law. LGEDF stands for Local Government Economic Development Fund. Those funds were intended, when they were created by statute, to help diversify economies in coal counties, to replace the loss of mining jobs when coal was no longer the mainstay or the economic engine that drove the coal counties. And this is what it was designed for. Coal severance was not designed for parks and playgrounds, in my opinion, that's just my opinion. It wasn't designed to run day-to-day government operations. It was designed to help make sure that there would be a future, for future generations in Eastern Kentucky and Western Kentucky's coal counties. And that's what we're doing with this money. We can only use it for economic development, and that's why that we are drawing down this amount of money. The statute, House Bill 200, was passed when I was in the legislature, that requires the county judge and the legislators to agree. But I am asking for a full resolution by the fiscal court to be a sign to the Department of Local Government and to the legislators that the full fiscal court is supportive of this. And if you'll notice on page three of the grant application that is in there in the package, it shows that this is a grant that is for the $2,481,210 EDA that is for the $2,481,210 EDA grant match. We are optimistic that we're going to get this money. The total cost to do Phase One and Phase Two for water, sewer, internet, fiber, and the other infrastructure at Wolf Pit is $5,28,757, with approximately 4.4 million of that coming in the two grants. And Ms. Hall, thank you very much. Would you like to come up, Sharon, and just you can go over if I've missed anything as she comes up and has a seat? First of all, Sharon, let me say thank you for the hard work that you've done on this. This shows why it's important to have a grant administrator in fiscal court, in county government, because this is $4.4 million of money that we hope to be able to obtain with a $620,000 match. I think it's a vitally important project. And Sharon, would you like to add anything if I've misstated anything or?
Getting our $620,000 from LG E D F, that's the final step. We had to do the environmental, which we got all that stuff back finally here a couple of weeks ago. But this is the final thing before we submit our grant. And the AML pilot that will be Phase Two is typically open May to June. They had talked about it being open in June, so right now, because of COVID, I'm not sure when that date will be, but I'm thinking late summer. That'll be for Phase Two. But for Phase One, we're ready to do the EDA. We're ready to submit it as soon as I get approval back from DLG. That was my final piece.
This should be fairly quick, I would think, to get approval from DLG.
Should be, yeah.
I'll be happy to reach out to Representative Harris, Representative Hatton, Representative Blanton, and Representative Tackett LaFerty, and Senator Wheeler, if necessary, because they do have to sign off on this. And I appreciate your hard work on this and the ad district.
I did get all my support letters. I just like one more, and I'll probably have it tomorrow. I just needed the resolution.
When we're able, if we're able to do this, and are you pretty optimistic that we'll get the grants?
Unless money gets pulled out of EDA assistance to coal communities to COVID, I wouldn't, there'd be no other reason, because we're one of the most harshly affected communities for coal loss as anybody in the United States.
So say that again, because I think the people out there, you're saying that Pike County should get the grant because we have been one of the most hard-hit
Yes.
of any coal communities?
Yes. Actually, in eastern Kentucky, or in the eastern region, eastern Kentucky, this ARC area, I think what I looked at in 10 years, it was like 100, it was like 17,000 jobs lost in eastern Kentucky in 10 years. We had to put all those facts in the grant. 17,000 jobs is a lot of jobs.
A lot of those jobs in Pike County?
Yeah, and a lot of those in Pike County.
And, you know, I keep saying I'm not going to belabor the point, because I've talked about the loss of revenue. And it's, we're going to deal with the situation at hand. We can't relive the past. We can't second guess the decisions that were made. We can only do what is in the best interest of the county with the circumstances we have. And I think that moving forward on developing industrial sites in Pike County, it may not see, you may not see fruit overnight from those efforts.
No.
But future generations in Pike County, my children and grandchildren may be able to see.
I'm hoping we'll see an industry up there in a couple of years.
That's what I'm hoping to.
That's my wish.
And I'm hoping that my vision and this court's vision is that if we put these sites in and we market eastern Kentucky, we take the steps we need to, you know, do things that improve our schools, keep people in school.
Right.
We can sell eastern Kentucky and bring jobs here. It's not going to happen overnight. But if you don't have places to put them.
Right. You can't sell something you don't have.
You can't sell something you don't have, and we're going to have our first industrial site as soon as we get this money. And I think the timeframe is that we could have the infrastructure in place next summer, I think is the goal.
That was our goal.
That's our goal.
We've only been slowed down. We actually was ahead of schedule, and then we got slowed down a couple of weeks, but we're back on track.
Just please, if there's anything that the court needs to do, we need to push this. This is the most important thing that the court's working on, in my opinion. And, you know, I've had people say, well, why is it at Wolf Pit? Well, it's the only industrial site we have that is industrial, has industrial capacity.
Right.
And if you live at Vergey, or you live at Phelps, or you live at Belfry, you're not that far with the roads that we have now. And what we've seen at Pikeville Medical Center, you've got people driving from many, many miles away, people from West Virginia, people from Virginia, coming there to work. And, you know, people will drive to work. We've got people that drive from here to Toyoa to work. What we want to be able to do is keep them here at home and let them work in Pike County.
It's 10 minutes from Pikeville.
It's 10 minutes. And it's not that far from any other part of the county.
No.
We've got coal miners driving two and three hours still to work in the mines and other places. So again, I think it's a great job, and we're going to continue to move forward. It's a very positive thing. You know, we've had a lot of negatives. This is a really positive thing for Pike County, and I appreciate your work on it.
Hey, Sharon?
Yes.
Could you just kind of, I mean, I don't want a number or anything, kind of just let the people know since day one that we've came in, how many grants that we're actually trying to get?
Oh, how many I've worked on?
Yeah. How many have we tried, we've got applied for? Do you have any number on the?
Me, myself?
Right.
Including the FEMA, I'm sure a million and a half. I know of a million and a half that we have applied for and have received. Now, we haven't gotten everything that we've applied for.
I mean, I just want to let the people know that.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's not that we're not trying. We're working you real hard.
Yes.
I gave her an assignment last week to work with the sheriff's office and the jail for a grant application to help cover the cost of some of the COVID-19-related expenses that we've had to deal with. You're working on that now with Sheriff Scott?
It's pretty much ready to go. It opens up at midnight tonight. I've already got the totals pretty much for the detention center and for the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department won't be as much because they didn't have overtime like I thought they would. Of course, the detention centers had a lot of struggles, a lot of overtime, and they all need PP equipment.
And Mr. Morse is going to be here at the next meeting next week to update us on what the jail's done. And, but again, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So let's move this forward. Is there a motion to adopt a resolution of the Pike County Fiscal Court authorizing the filing of a Kentucky Department of Local Government Economic Development Fund, House Bill 200, project proposal, grant application in the amount of $620,303, and Local Government Economic Development Single County Funds to be utilized as matching funds for the EDA grant application for assistance to coal counties for the development of infrastructure at the Wolf Pit Industrial and Technology Park and approval to execute all related documents?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Aye.
We have a second by Commissioner Booth. Any other question or discussion? I'm sorry, Commissioner Robertson. I don't know why I wrote Booth then. Second by Commissioner Robertson. Is there any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. The next item is the adoption of a resolution approving the execution of the Pike County Road Aid Cooperative Program Agreement between the Pike County Fiscal Court and the Commonwealth Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and accepting all roads and streets referred to therein as being part of the county road system. Now, if the court will recall, this is something we have already addressed. There's a slight problem. A lot of people really may not understand how our roads are built and maintained here in Kentucky, both at the state level and the local level. The road fund, which is comprised of receipts from the motor vehicle usage tax when you register your vehicle, and also the motor fuels tax, which is the gas tax. When you buy a gallon of gas, 26 cents goes into the account. 26 cents of every gallon, it was 32 cents at one time, but because the price of fuel fell, the gas tax receipts have been way down. Then the pandemic hits. So last week, we were notified by the Transportation Cabinet, Department of Rural and Municipal Aid, that the pandemic has caused a substantial decrease in the state's fuel tax receipts. People aren't driving. Companies are shut down. Stay-at-home orders have been issued, and it has had a significant negative impact on the state's collections. And if you look at the county road aid cooperative agreement, it lays out how the fuel taxes are allocated. 18.3% of the revenue from the imposition of motor fuels taxes are set aside for construction, reconstruction, maintenance of county roads and bridges, which is referred to as the county road aid fund. We had already done this a few weeks ago, but because of the declining gas tax receipts, they have revised the numbers in Frankfurt. And our county road aid has been reduced by $316,991.05. Now, we have also been told that we may not receive our balance payment in August. Last August, the county received $292,000 in the last installment of county road aid for the prior fiscal year. At the end of the fiscal year, the state goes back and does the final calculation, and there is a balance payment. Last year, it was 292,000. We've been told we may not receive that. We also are concerned that the flex funds that the county receives may be decreased substantially as well. Last year, we received $395,000 in flex funds that were used for paving county roads. So we have to enter this revised cooperative agreement. In total, it appears that we're going to lose somewhere between $500,000 and $600,000 in county road aid in the next fiscal year. That is a significant, significant blow to the county's road department, and it is one of the reasons that we were forced to make a reduction in the number of employees in the county road department. None of us wanted to make any kind of staff reductions at all, because it affects so many people. But when you lose half a million dollars in county road aid, we had basically no choice but to make a corresponding reduction in the road department. So with that being said, is there a motion for adoption of a resolution approving the revised county road aid cooperative program agreement between the fiscal court and the Commonwealth Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and accepting all roads and streets referred to therein as being part of the county road system? We have a motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Tackett. Any question or discussion? I know this is something that's been concerning to all the commissioners. And Commissioner Roberts, I know this is something that you've been.
Yeah, I know, Judge, you know, I think Brian and Jason and I have all thought about what roads we want to get paved this coming year. And now we're facing this big deficit that we probably won't want to get, that we're not going to get this money. It makes it hard. It makes it hard for these roads that's tore up out in the county. I just ask the county to be patient with us, you know. This has hurt in our county. It's hurt the whole state. But it's all over the country. So I just hope the citizens out here of the county will just be patient with us, and we'll try to take care of this as soon as we can.
Mr. Tackett, you?
Yeah, I spoke with Senator Wheeler and Representative Hatton a couple of times, and I know that the state just put a budget together for a year through all this, and they eventually have to go back to it. And the only thing I hope is when they get in, get back on this fixing the other budget, that maybe we might can get that money back. We may not, but it's just, it's a hope. And that's pretty much, you know, just the people of this county just give us time. You know, we can only work with what we got, and, you know, we didn't, it's not our cut in the road aid money. It's just, that's what we got. It's what we're going to get, so.
I think you had mentioned to me a couple of things I think I need to mention, is I reached out to the governor's office because a friend of mine sent me some information from Senator McConnell's office that would lead you to believe that we would be eligible for part of the $1.7 billion that the federal government has given the state. When I contacted the governor's office, they're telling me that we are not eligible, that those monies were earmarked for very specific COVID-19-related expenses, healthcare, personal protective equipment, those kind of things. And as some of you may have seen, Senator McConnell even made this statement last week that, you know, he doesn't foresee help for state governments, that, you know, that it may be necessary for states to file bankruptcy. I personally think that's, you know, if states start filing bankruptcy, we've not seen anything in terms of depression at that point. You're talking about, you know, if a state can file bankruptcy, that's the most, that would be devastating. It would be devastating to the entire country. But at this point in time, there is no proposal in Congress that's moving forward, nor in Frankfurt, that would return any money to these counties to make up for the lost revenue that we're suffering, particularly occupational net profit tax, increased overtime for our solid waste and law enforcement. And I think, Commissioner Tackett, you reached out to one of the state representatives, and you could, would you relate what they told you in terms of?
It just didn't, it didn't look like we were going to get anything, you know. And it's, time will tell, but it don't, it don't look good coming back to the counties.
Well, and here's the bad thing. The federal government can just print money. You know, if they run a deficit, they, the federal deficit's higher than it's ever been. Means that, and what that means, if you're not familiar with budgets, is they're spending more money than they're taking in. They're borrowing money from the US taxpayers to spend it. That's where the stimulus money comes from. A lot of people don't recognize that for every, the stimulus money comes out to almost $7,000 for every man, woman, and child in the US. It's probably closer to $50,000 or $60,000 for every person that works in the US. We don't have that luxury. And if we make a mistake, there's nobody to bail the county out. We have to live within our means, and I hope and pray that at some point, we do get some help. But we can't rely on that. And I think that's the information that.
That's, you know, very doubtful we do, so. That's all we can go with till something else comes up.
Then we're going to do the best we can with what we've got. Commissioner Booth?
That's the same thing I've seen. I've got in a habit of watching the governor at 5:00 about every day, just see what's going on. And he made a statement the other day that we needed help from the federal government, and the state would be in really bad shape and the counties would be in really bad shape if they didn't get help from the federal government. So I just, you know, just hope that we do get help from the federal government.
Here's the only thing I'm going to close out on this topic. If 30 million people have lost their jobs, if the biggest employer in Pike County is laying people off, if the state only passes a one-year budget because of the financial implications, if communities around the country, police officers are laid off, doctors laid off, nurse practitioners and PAs laid off, you have to be pretty skeptical to think that that would not impact the Pike County Fiscal Court and every other county in Kentucky. But we're going to live within our means and do what we have to do. And I think we can, we can, you know, there's no saying when you've been given lemons, you make lemonade. And that's what we're going to try to do. We're going to try to make the best out of the situation we're in. And, you know, there's no point in complaining about it. And I think we've got some very positives that we'll talk about here in a minute on the budget. So the next item is something that came to my attention.
We need a vote, Judge.
I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead of myself. So the next item will be authorization to remit, I'm sorry. Author, adoption of a resolution approving the execution of the county road aid agreement. We have a motion by Commissioner Booth and a second by Commissioner Tackett. Seeing no other question or discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. So the next item is something that just came to my attention this week, and I'm going to try my best to explain this. Back in the last administration, Exel Mining and an affiliate of Exel MC Mining approached the court. the court about, uh, economic assistance to help them with this project, and this project has the potential to employ somewhere around two hundred employees. And the documents are in the folder. Um, this came before the court on April twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, and I flagged, um, if you look on page two of that document, about halfway down, um, and I'll just read this to you. Uh, Deputy Judge Executive Herbie Deskins, um, stated that he and county attorney, uh, Assistant County Attorney Kyle Deskins had met with representatives of the company, and that they were making an application to the Kentucky Industrial Revitalization, actually should be for a Kentucky Industrial Revitalization Act grant. Uh, that act is for companies that show their operation reserves are going to end at a specific time. He said it's asking for the one percent occupational tax, uh, and that the state will match that four times over to help with the cost of new facilities and other tax incentives. Uh, he said that the cost of the entire project was nine hundred and fifty-eight million, and that they were assuring the county that two hundred and twenty coal mining jobs would be saved at the end of twenty twenty. Now, Mr. Deskins said that, um, they will be tapping into reserves, um, and using a six-mile overhead tram from John's Creek to Brushy, and it would cost the county approximately a hundred and sixty-seven thousand per year in, uh, lost occupational tax. But on the other hand, it would result in a substantial increase in the, um, county's, um, coal severance tax receipts, which would be estimated to be another three point five million a year in severance tax and an additional three hundred and sixty-seven thousand in property taxes. Now, this would not impact the net profit tax. It would simply be the one percent occupational tax on the miners' wages. Half would go back to the company and half under this other agreement that I'm going to talk to you about. If you look at the first document, um, this is an agreement that was proposed and supported by the prior administration, and they came up with a proposal that half of the rebated occupational tax would be used to support the county volunteer fire departments. Uh, that agreement was entered into, uh, by a representative of MC Mining. Unfortunately, the prior administration never signed the agreement. I, I'm not sure why, um, but as I understand it, it was approved, and, uh, for some reason, um, it was never signed by Judge Deskins. And I think, is that correct, Jeannie? Okay, because Jeannie was here, was working for Judge Deskins at the time. And, um, so this is a way that we can help foster economic development because they are working on this project now. We've been contacted by, uh, Excel Mining. They are moving forward with it. This is great news. It's going to put people to work, and it's going to help increase our severance tax next year, uh, good Lord willing. So if you look at this agreement, this is an agreement that was drafted and was executed by the company previously. We've made some changes because it had Judge Deskins' name on it. It says, "This agreement made and entered into between the Pike County Fiscal Court and MC Mining and its operating affiliate Excel Mining, having an underground coal operation located in Pike County." It says, "In consideration of the agreement conditions and covenants herein and after set out by and between the parties, it is hereby agreed as follows. The county is committed to supporting the local volunteer fire departments and has a full-time emergency management director. In exchange for the county's continued commitment to provide financial support to the local volunteer fire departments, the company agrees to pay to the county point fifty percen," it's actually half a percent, "of the average annual wage of its employees, which typically numbers two hundred and ten persons. For the year twenty seventeen, the average wage purpose, for the purpose of calculating the payment would have been seventy thousand, which resulted in a cash payment to the county of seventy-three thousand five hundred, had the agreement been in place during that period." And it's got the first payment will be due, it's got a blank there. It depends on when they, um, commence operations. It says, "Beginning in twenty twenty, the company will make quarterly payments with the first payment being due, blank, and then it goes on to when others will be due." We may have to change the dates in this, uh, because we don't know when the mining is actually going to commence. It says, "The company will submit a report of the number of employees with each quarterly payment. The agreement shall remain in effect for so long as the company receives benefits from the Kentucky Industrial Revitalization Act unless sooner terminated by mutual agreement of the parties or by one party giving the other ninety days written notice." So, um, this is something we can do to help move, uh, forward the county in terms of economic development and job creation, and also helping our volunteer fire departments, which are the backbone of so many of our communities. So, um, if there are no questions, uh, is there a motion to authorize the judge executive to execute an agreement with MC Mining and its operating affiliate Excel Mining for financial support of our local fire departments as described in this agreement that I've just recited to you? We have a motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Tackett. Is there any question or discussion about this?
No, I, I think this is a good deal for the county. Um, is Fabian out there?
He is there.
There's just one thing that I would like to say. You know, we've, we've got new blacktop over on Ford Mountain, a little ways down into Brushy. Um, you know, they, they take some real big equipment in there, and it's, it's really took a toll on the road. I think we ought to get together with the company and ask them if they should help us a little bit on blacktop on that road, or make the repairs we need to do, you know? They're, they're running some pretty good-sized stuff in and out of there, and it's, it won't take long before a blacktop's tore up.
I think that's a good idea, and, you know, it may be that we need to look at all the existing mining operations. I was on Big Hackney's Creek last week, and that road is in very bad shape. And earlier today, I talked to, uh, District Three Road Foreman Gary France about this. Commissioner Tackett and I discussed this with him. He said that road was paved about three or four years ago.
I, I think four years ago.
Four years ago.
I think four.
And it's in awful shape, and it's because of the, the hauling. And, you know, we want coal production in Pike County. We want people working. We want them hauling coal. We want them working as much as we can get them working, but if they're going to tear the roads up, it's something that we're going to have to ask them to help pay to fix because we can't take, we don't have the tax re, revenue to do that. So, um, Commissioner Robertson, I will discuss that with Mr. Little. And Jeannie, if you'll set a meeting up with the representatives of Excel, we'd like to sit down, talk to them, see what we can do to help them make sure that this project, uh, is successful, and, and talk to them as well about the road issues in Brushy because, you know, we've, we've spent a lot of money on Ford Mountain. We're, we've got more work to be done there, and, uh, we need to see if there's any way they could give us some help on that.
And, and the people down in Brushy deserves a road.
Well, they deserve a safe road, and, uh...
Yes.
There's, they, a lot of them feel like they've been neglected for a long time.
Well, you know, I represent them, and they have been neglected for a long time, and I told them, if, if I got put in this position, I'd try to help them get better roads over there and some water, and that's what I intend to do. But I, I'm not, I'm not putting it all on the coal company. We've got logging companies that's doing the same thing, too. I mean, they're making money off the, uh, the county, and, I mean, they're, they're working in the county, and I, I think it's just fair that, you know, that they need to try to help us a little bit on the roads, you know?
I agree.
Because we don't have the money. We do not have the money. And you see what we went through today, you know, where road aid's going to be cut drastically.
And we don't know how long that's going to last.
That's true.
Judge, we're, me and Fabian, and, uh, Mr. Murphy's going to go up and speak next week, uh, with, uh, one of the bosses, uh, for Big Hackney's Creek.
Well, it needs to be done, and, uh, you know, look, and I'll discuss that in the budget here in just a minute as I present it to you, but anyway. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other question or discussion on this matter? So the matter is authorization to execute an agreement with MC Mining and its operating affiliate Excel Mining for financial support of local fire departments. We have a motion, a second, seeing no other question or discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. So that brings me to, uh, the next item on the agenda, which is acknowledgment of receipt of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one proposed budget, uh, as prepared by the Pike County Judge Executive. Now, let me say this. I, first of all, want to thank, uh, County Treasurer Frankie Stacy and his staff, and Finance Supervisor Pam Vanover, and Deputy Judge Reggie Hickman, because they have done a lot of work to help put this budget together. And as I said, this budget is going to be about two million dollars in base revenue below the budget that we're operating under now. And I don't really want to go into that and, and, and continue to belabor that point, but unlike Washington, the Pike County Fiscal Court has to pass a balanced budget. Our budget has to balance at the end of the year, and it has to be approved by the Department of Local Government before it can take effect. Now, we're doing this a lot earlier than has been done in the past. We're going to hopefully have this budget done into, uh, the Department of Local Government by mid-May, uh, third week of May at the latest. This is a proposed budget. It is not the final budget, uh, but it is my roadmap for Pike County for the next year. And I think it's a very positive budget, even with less revenue. Uh, as I discussed a moment ago, there's approximately five million and twenty-eight thousand in economic development dollars to develop Pike County's first industrial site, the first industrial site in the county tax base, where we can try to bring new businesses and new industry to Pike County. Uh, during my term in the legis, terms in the legislature, and as county judge, there's nothing more important than putting people to work. If we have people working, we'll have the tax revenue to build parks and playgrounds. We'll have the tax revenue for our volunteer fire departments. We'll have the tax revenue to continue to invest in our water and sewer. We'll have the tax revenue to invest in our roads and infrastructure. Without that tax revenue coming from people working, it makes this job very difficult. Uh, we have seen a, uh, significant, uh, decrease in the county's revenue. We've talked about the road aid. We've talked in the past about the coal severance tax. This budget, uh, appropriates a one million dollars in, uh, less in coal and mineral severance than the preceding budget. It also takes into account the increased cost of employee benefits such as health insurance, workers' compensation, liability insurance. Uh, fortunately, it does not have to, uh, increase the pension contribution because that was deferred in the state's, uh, annual budget. Now, one of the benefits that this budget does provide is even though we've had a staff reduction in our road department, uh, it does not make any cuts for asphalt or material. We kept the same base budget so that our existing road departments, our six road lots, can continue to make sure that they have the material that they need for important repairs and routine maintenance. Another, uh, positive about this budget is it provides two hundred and fifty thousand in economic development dollars to help get our trail system up and running. Uh, we had talked about this in the past. Uh, I believe that prior administrations have talked about a trail system. We would have had a big announcement to make, uh, had the pandemic not hit. That has slowed us down some. There's no question our trail committee has not met in a couple of months now, but as soon as the social distancing restrictions are lifted, as soon as we can get the courthouse back open, we're going to get people in here so that we can start, uh, moving our trail system forward. This budget provides two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in economic development money to help create Pike County's trail system, which we believe could be the biggest trail system when it's all said and done in Central Appalachian. Our goal is to give the Hatfield and McCoy Trail System in West Virginia a run for its money. I think we can do that right here in Pike County, and we can branch it out to other counties in Eastern Kentucky, and we can use that as a springboard to bring people to the region, to showcase Eastern Kentucky and Pike County in particular, and to create jobs and help our existing businesses grow and prosper. Uh, we see people from all over the country coming to West Virginia and other areas to ride trails. They're staying in motels, they're eating in restaurants, they're spending money here. We can continue to expand on that. It's only a beginning. We've made more progress on the trail system in the last year than the county has made in many, many years. When I was in the State Senate, we appropriated money to create a trail system in Pike County. That money was squandered. It was used to build bathroom facilities and call it a trailhead instead of actually building a trail. No longer are we going to tolerate accepting no, uh, for an answer. We're going to get this done. We're going to move the county forward because the people of Pike County deserve as much. I think that ties into what I mentioned earlier about the Wolf Pit Industrial Site. A five million dollar investment in the infrastructure in that site will give us our first industrial site. That five million dollars is also going to be money that will go back into the economy. It's going to be local construction companies putting in the water and sewer. Uh, it's going to help the local power company and its employees because getting the three-phase power in, those are dollars that are going to turn over here in our economy. It's money that wouldn't have come into Pike County had we not applied for it, and it's money that will be a long-term investment in the financial stability of this region. Another very positive that this budget has is it fully funds the ISO program for our volunteer fire departments. This budget will put four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars into Pike County's volunteer fire departments. That's a record amount, and it will make sure that our fire departments can continue to serve the people of this county and provide the life-saving services that our communities depend on. The budget also provides that we will continue to pay for the, uh, insurance on all the volunteer fire department rescue squad vehicles in Pike County. It will continue to help the sheriff's office with the subsidy, with the subsidy that has, uh, an amount of three hundred thousand dollars to help the sheriff, uh, and his staff continue with their drug interdiction efforts, to make sure that we have a deputy in each high school, and to continue to see the number of certified police officers on the sheriff's department increase. Right now, Sheriff Scott has more certified deputies than any point in time in the history of the Pike County Sheriff's Department, and I want to commend him on his good work, and we're going to continue to work to help him move the sheriff's office forward. Uh, the budget does provide a reduced subsidy to the Pike County Detention Center. I want to thank jailer Brian Morris and Jason Fields, uh, and their staff for the work that they've done in terms of increasing the revenue at the jail. This is the lowest amount that the jail has been subsidized in many years, and it is only because of the hard work that the jail staff has done to make that possible. So we want to thank Sheriff Scott, uh, who's also a former jailer, and jailer Brian Morris and their staff for, for working with us. Uh, the budget's got a lot of good things in it. Uh, it also is a very financially responsible budget. This budget does not raise taxes in any way, shape, form, or fashion. This court did not raise property taxes. This court has taken the position that while we may have to make cuts in terms of payroll or payroll expenditures, personnel, we are not raising your taxes. If you're watching this program, this court will not raise your taxes. Now, what that means is that we may have to make some painful cuts. We may have to have a workforce reduction. We may have to consolidate services, but we believe, and this budget carries out the philosophy of this court, that a lot of people are struggling financially, not just because of the COVID-19 pandemic. They're struggling because the economy was in bad shape here when this court came in, and we're trying to make that... They're struggling because the economy was in bad shape here when this court came in, and we're trying to make that better. I will tell you what we are not going to do. We are not going to put an additional tax burden on people, on fixed income, on people who may have lost their jobs, on businesses that are already struggling to survive. We're not going to do that. We're not going to raise property taxes. We've had some people say, well, you can put an insurance premium tax on. We will not do that. The fiscal court is limited on where we get our revenue. The big sources of revenue historically have been coal and mineral severance tax. Now, one of the largest sources is occupational net profit tax. We have very limited means in terms of raising money, raising revenue for county government services. The only other option that we have would be an insurance premium tax. But this court is not going to do what other courts in other counties around us have done. We're not going to raise your car insurance. We're not going to raise your homeowner's insurance. We're not going to raise your health insurance. If you run a business, we're not going to raise your liability insurance premiums. We're not going to raise your workers' compensation premiums. We're going to continue to hold taxes as low as possible on the people of this county. We only ask you to understand if that has an impact on county services or the number of people that are employed by the fiscal court, to keep that in mind. But we simply cannot hurt every man, woman, and child in Pike County and every business by increasing the tax burden. We would love to have more revenue to be able to do more, but we're living within our means. I believe that government should live within its means. My family has to live within its means, as does most of the families and the folks living here. A lot of people are on fixed income. Their income doesn't go up and down. And it's hard for a lot of people to absorb increased, uh, taxes, increased fees, and so forth. Sometimes those things are necessary. It was necessary for us to raise the solid waste rates, uh, or else we would have seen the solid waste system shut down. We made a decision that while it wasn't popular, it was the right thing to do for this county. Just like I believe that this is a financially responsible budget that doesn't increase taxes on the people of this county, and we live within our means. I think it's important that we do that. And unlike the federal government that can just borrow money and print money, it is a balanced budget. It is responsible. And it makes sure that we will be able to continue to provide essential county services, picking up trash, helping our fire departments, helping our senior citizen centers, and making sure that we continue to provide the best roadwork that we can within our resources. I've talked in the past, our resources in our road department were already, uh, woefully lacking. Having a $500,000 or so reduction in our county road aid does not help. But we're going to live within our means. So with that being said, I will be happy to answer any questions. Uh, or Judge Hickman and, uh, Mr. Stacy, uh, will be happy to, uh, to answer any questions. We will have this budget hopefully for a first reading. Later today, uh, I'm going to be meeting with the chiefs of all the volunteer fire departments. We're going to have to do it in three separate sessions. I'm going to go over the budget with them. I'm going to talk to them about the project that we're working on with Excel Mining that may provide additional revenue. But one thing I need to, to make sure is we have asked all the volunteer fire departments for their financial information, not for the purpose of, of, of trying to tell them how to spend money. But some of our volunteer fire departments are dependent on bingo revenue to make their budgets. And we saw, and it was, and it came, this really came to my mind because we were working with the senior citizens, uh, board. And the senior citizens board that is responsible for the day-to-day operation of the senior citizens, that board, which is comprised of representatives from each center, voted to shut down two centers. Not a decision this fiscal court made. We didn't have anything to do with that. Uh, but one of the main reasons was because they were on pace to be about 30,000 or so short in terms of their, uh, revenue from, uh, bingo. It's probably going to be closer to 50 or 55,000 short now. So if that's going to have that, if the loss of bingo revenue is going to hit our senior citizens program to that magnitude, I am very concerned that it could hit some of our volunteer fire departments, uh, very hard. So we're going to meet with them today and make sure that none of them are going to be in a significant financial predicament. Uh, one of our volunteer fire departments, I noticed, uh, the revenue is, I'm, I'm more concerned about than others. But it may be that after we meet with them today, that we will need you all to, uh, appropriate a small amount of money as in a contingency, uh, in the event that any of our volunteer fire departments, uh, have a financial hardship and can't make, uh, their, their basic, uh, utilities and so forth, uh, due to the pandemic. Now, just so I want to remind the folks out there, the fiscal court pays for the insurance on every fire department vehicle in the county. Most of the facilities are provided and owned by the fiscal court, and we do a lot of the work on a lot of the bill, a lot of the fire department facilities. We don't do it all. Some of them take care of their own facilities, but a lot of them, I think we put two roofs on fire departments last year. That money comes right out of this county budget that we, uh, we have worked so hard to make sure is, is responsible. We want to thank our volunteer firefighters, our rescue squad personnel, and our other first responders, uh, because they are so important to our communities, and this budget, again, honors our commitment to them as well. So if you all have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those. And if not, uh, we need a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the 2021 proposed budget as prepared by the Judge Executive's Office. We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second? A second by Commissioner Booth. Is there any questions or discussions about the draft? And, uh, if, I know you haven't had time to look at this. That's the whole purpose of presenting it. Um, I do want to mention something. Last year and this year, Judge Hickman and Mr. Stacy went through this budget with a fine tooth comb. And we took out things that we didn't need to be spending money on, and there were revenue, estimated revenues in here, little miscellaneous things that, uh, that have been kept in the budget year after year. A lot of that was taken out. This base budget is 550,000 less than last year's budget, even without personnel changes. So we cut 550,000 out of the line item expenditures. Everything from office supplies. We've worked to cut the power bills down. We've worked to cut spending every way we can. And if you recall, um, you know, just take that, the things like that this court did last year, like getting rid of the old majestic school that they had spent $135,000 on just to sit there. So we've tried to make sure that we're spending taxpayer money wisely. This budget in terms of labor cost, I think is very important. This budget in terms of labor cost and benefits is $1,747,105.20 less than the last budget. When you combine that with the 50, 550,000, you're talking almost $2.3 million less spending in this budget than the prior budget. And that's because of the decreased revenue and increased cost. But we're living again with, within our means. I think it's the right thing to do for the future of the county. Uh, it's not been an easy budget. It's been some very painful decisions that we've had to make, uh, in terms of staffing. But it is a good budget that will let us do, uh, continue to give the best service we can within our resources. So if there's, is, is there any other questions? And you all will have some time to look at it. If there's any changes that we need to make or amendments after you look at it, uh, you can get with us, get with Frankie, and he can prepare those amendments for you for action by Tuesday. Is that right, Frankie? The next court meeting is Tuesday. I would like to do the first reading on Tuesday so we can get this thing done and get it to the Department of Local Government, uh, as soon as we can. And if you, and if you're not ready, if they're not ready to do it, then we can defer it to the, the, the second May meeting, um, or have a special meeting. I'd like to get this to D O G as soon as we can. Um, but there may be some amendments that the court wants to make to the budget. I may have missed something. Uh, I may need to go back and look at something, but when you guys go through it.
So we, we've got court meeting this Tuesday.
I think the next, next Tuesday is the first May meeting. Uh, we had the special meeting today so that I can get the budget to you by May 1st, which is my obligation. So.
We should, we should be able to look over them the weekend and. Can't we, Brian?
And if there's any other documentation that you need, uh, please let us know, and we'll try to get it to you. So, um, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge the 2020-21, 2020-2021 proposed budget. Prepare the Pike County Judge Executive, uh, seeing no other question or discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Uh, the next item is the Pike County Road Supervisor's report. Uh, there's no need for that. I do want to express my congratulations to, uh, Caitlin Little, who is the daughter of Fabian Little, our road supervisor. Fabian's not here tonight because Caitlin has graduated from the nursing program, the RN program at the University of Pikeville. And I've watched this young girl, uh, I've known her whole li, her whole life, and I'm very proud of, of the person that she is. She's been hired by Pikeville Medical Center as an ICU nurse. Um, and I want to congratulate Fabian and his wife, Kim. They have raised an outstanding young lady. As many of you know, uh, Fabian and I grew up together. We played high school football together. And, uh, you know, it's, it's wonderful to see, uh, one of your best friend's daughters be successful. And it's a testament to our local schools. It's a testament to the University of Pikeville and that resource that we have here that very, very few communities in America the size of Pikeville and Pike County have a nursing school of that caliber, a medical school, an optometry school, a business school. We've got a lot of things going for us here. Things haven't always gone well as we would like. We've had some, some major hurdles to overcome, but we've got a lot of opportunities and a lot of assets here. University of Pikeville is one example, but young folks like Caitlin Little, that's where the future's at. A local girl, local school, goes to a local university, and now she's going to be an RN, and we're so proud of her. And I'd just like to extend my congratulations to Fabian and Kim, especially Caitlin. Uh, there's some other folks that are in that class, um, that we want to, um, uh, Keely Coleman is a friend of our family, uh, who has babysat, uh, my children. She's graduated the same class. A lot of great young people here, uh, who are going into healthcare. And, um, we want to wish them all, this whole class from the University of Pikeville School of Nursing, congratulations. You all have anything to add on that one?
I'd like to say something about the, we're on the road department, and, uh, I just want to say this. Uh, I, we met, I met with, have talked to the road foremen and, and I know with the, the cuts we had to do, it's, it's going to make them shorthanded. But since Easter Sunday night, uh, I talked with, uh, Noah Case and Ralph Blankenship on Monday. And I think it was 340, maybe a little more loads, tandem loads of brush and debris that they've cleaned out of District Two, parts of One, and I think, uh, that's counting in District, District Three, too. But I think the big out of, but the, the biggest chunk of it come out of District Two, and they pulled together like no other and worked together. And that's what it's going to take in this county moving forward, is pulling together and being one, being a team. And that, you know, I just, I just want to commend them for that.
Earlier today, I met with all six road foremen. And they understand the situation with the, with the manpower reduction that we have, but they're working together. We've had storms over in, um, in the, in the eastern part, the western part of the county, southwestern part of the county, Shelby Valley. And we had, you know, up on my creek, on Island Creek, we had, uh, the Belfry Road Crew was over there working. We were over in a, Commissioner Booth and I were over at Mud Lick when there was a washout over there, and we had the Marbone Lot over there working. So they're working together, and it's going to be important for these lots to work together. And it's no longer the Belfry Lot or the Phelps Lot. These people are helping. They're pitching in. And if they need extra manpower at Phelps, they'll send them from Belfry, or they'll send them from, from Pikeville, wherever. Everybody's pitched in, and, uh, I think that's important, and I appreciate the job that Fabian's done to try to. We've not exactly set Fabian up to have an easy job. Uh, less money to work with, less people to work, to do the work, but he's doing a great job. He's taking it very, uh, he, he, he's taking it very personal and very, uh, serious, uh, because he is a perfectionist. He wants to do the best thing he can. Can't always do what everybody asks. Um, you and I were talking about a lady that got mad at, at us because we couldn't put a bridge in on to her property. Of course, it would have been a, a crime for us to do that, but he's doing it right. He's doing it by the book. And, uh, I want to thank him and again congratulate his family on his daughter graduating from nursing school. All right, uh, Mr. Stacy, any treasurer's business, sir? I don't think there's any need for executive session. We've got meetings starting at about, uh, 5:30 with the volunteer firemen. We don't have any personnel matters, and we'll be back here Tuesday to address those. Um, unless, um, I don't think we have any, uh, Mr. King gave us an update on the RCC Big Show litigation last week. And we're going to dispense with the Pike County Department Supervisor's comments. Mr. King, you have anything you want to add from the county attorney's perspective?
Question that Commissioner Robertson had earlier about the road maintenance over at Brushy.
Yeah, might want to say that again, Kevin, because.
You'd ask a question earlier about the road maintenance at Brushy with the, uh, the mining company about to go in over there. And we have prepared numerous, uh, road maintenance agreements for companies, whether it be gas company or power company, whoever's working in particular areas of the county that they've executed, uh, in order to take care of the roads that's getting excessive wear and tear because of the, the heavy trucks and the frequent business as opposed to general, uh, pedestrian traffic. And, um, we'll get that meeting set up, and I'll address it with Fabian to make sure we've got an appropriate document that we can do to protect those roads over there.
Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate that. Those people deserve some roads, you know.
And, and it's not that we're jumping on the coal companies.
No.
We just wanted, we want to discuss how we can make a better, better road for the, the, the communities, for the people traveling it every day, you know, and the, and how we can work together on this.
This is nothing new to these companies. We've not had any pushback or fight from these companies. They're usually, uh, more than agreeable to enter into these agreements.
Well, it's like the judge said, you know, they've been without over there for a long time and neglected. And, uh, I mean, it's not just them. It's just like the one Jason's talking about. I mean, they're coming here and they're making money in Pike County. We need, you know, they need to help us, you know, to help the county, you know.
Thanks, sir. Judge Hickman, I think you have something you'd like to bring, uh. Okay. Well, let's go ahead and knock out these comments, uh, because we're in sort of a tight timeframe.
Yeah, the only, the only comment I wanted to make tonight was, uh, uh, about Frankie and the work that him and Pam has done right here.
Well, not just him. I disagree. You've been there too, so.
Well, I was, but let me, let me explain to everybody how many CFO-type people I've been around. And, uh, Mr. Stacy has a tremendous command of the numbers and the facts that are in this budget, almost always, almost off the top of his head, and he does deserve a lot of credit. And Frankie, I appreciate you.
I'll, I'll come back to that in a second. Um, let's go to commissioners' comments, or do you all want to do executive session right now and then come back and do those? You all call it. Let's go Jason Tackett, Commissioner District.
Judge, our last normal court meeting that we had, uh, before all this breakout, uh, I kindly announced that, uh, we had some big deals for Pike County. And ever since then, it's just, it's been like a snowball down the hill. I, you mentioned something a while ago about the trail system, and I do want to pop that top a little bit on that. I, I just want to, I just want people to know that we have the opportunity to hook the Pike County Trail up to Hatfield-McCoy Spearhead. Uh, I think in West Virginia, there's 13 counties. They got 600 and some miles of trails. We've got 700 already marked and not even three, not even a quarter of ways out of, around the county that we can hook up to Martin County, Floyd County, Knott County, Letcher County. You know, so there are some positive stuff out here, and it's just going to take. You know, so there are some positive stuff out here, and it's just going to take time to get it together, and we want to do it right, you know, and, and I just want to, I just want them, and, and the people that, whether they ride horses or they're, they're, they jog, they ride bikes, it's going to be for everybody, you know. We found a way to get through with the, we, we've worked on some things on, with people hunting, how it will, they, it's not going to, it's not going to mess with people. We're going to be able to get through all this, on this trail system, and I just wanted to give them a little bit of update on that.
Thank you, sir.
And, and another thing, I, I like some people in this county, in this state, I was seeing on the news where an Amish family had lost four members of the three kids and a wife, I think the, the wife, too, in a buggy accident in Bath County yesterday due to high water, and one was a, a very young child. I mean, there was, oh, there was three young kids there, but one was, was very, you know, keep that family in your prayers.
Thank you. Commissioner Robertson?
I don't have much to say. Everybody looks, you know, we've not had any great things to brag on, or, you know, we've had a lot of negative stuff that's hit us, but I was telling you, we're fighters. The people you all elected, we're fighters. We're, we're going to, we're going to make it through this. It's, it's been tough on all of us for the last year and four months, or really getting to be five months, but if you, if the citizens will just bear with us, we will make this county what it needs to be. Thank you.
Sometimes we fight with each other.
And I, I want to say one more thing, Judge. I think when we came in here, Frankie didn't have much of a smile on his face, but he's, he's got a little more smile now, so.
He's mad at me because I made him wear that. I didn't make him, but he's, he's been giving me a hard time about that. Commissioner Booth?
I guess Judge, kind of like Ronnie, I don't know, I enjoy watching, I guess I should say enjoy, but I like to, usually at 5 o'clock, I set to watch the governor to see what is new in the state, because, you know, I think that we need to know what's going on in the state and their, their county and everything that, and I kind of keep noticing, he keeps saying the new, new of everything, so it's kind of got me at, I just wonder how it, this new, new is going to be. Just like to see things get back to normal, and people can go back to the funeral home when somebody passes away and pay their respect, and go back to church, and get back to the normal. I guess that's what everybody's looking forward to, to getting back to the normal, and I just wonder what the new, new is, and it's normal, that's what keeps laying on my mind a lot, so. That's, I mean, I just can't wait till we can move forward again.
Well, I think we've all prayed for that, you know. I mean, every night when, when my little one, when I put him to bed and he says his prayers, you know, he's asking for Lord to watch over people who are sick and to protect people from this virus. This has had a catastrophic impact on a lot of people, more than 60,000. We've lost more people from this virus than we lost in the Vietnam War. You know, my dad's a Vietnam vet, and we've lost more in three months, less than three months than we have in, in all Vietnam in the, in the entire conflict. So it is a serious thing, and I think we've done the responsible thing here locally to address it. I want to just follow up again, you know, please take a look at the budget, and if I've made a mistake, let me know it, we'll fix it. Be gentle. It's, you know, we've put a lot of work into it. Mr. Stacy and Judge Hickman and Pam Vanover made my job really easy. I mean, my job was easy to put the budget together because a lot of this work was done over the course of the last year. It wasn't done just in the last few weeks. A lot of the work that we've done over the, this administration, working on things, making cuts, spending constraints, we've been working on this, and we've been actually looking at these revenue numbers for quite some time, but I want to personally thank Frankie Stacy, and I want to say this. I hope the people out there who might be tuned in to Frankie Stacy understand what he's done. He's gotten a crowning degree, he was a licensed CPA. I think it's in escrow right now because he's not practicing CPA, but he's a CPA, and it's important for us to have people who are educated, who are smart in county government, people like Frankie Stacy. He's, he's absolutely one of the most honest, humble people you'll ever meet, and I hope he don't get mad at me for saying that, but he's just a great guy who's dedicated to his job and his family. Frankie came into this position at a time in 2018 when the county was getting a lot of bad press, you know, two bad audits. The second audit that came out in like May of 2018 was so bad that the auditing firm wouldn't even express an opinion on it because the county's financial records were so bad, you know, inaccurate bank balances, checks that were upstairs. The county was balancing checks, checks that were a million dollars and checks that hadn't been deposited, transfers of county money that hadn't been recorded. Frankie came in and was given about three weeks to get all this financial information together for the Department of Local Government. They were within days of taking over county government, the state was, and, you know, people need to remember what he walked into, sort of what we walked into, the aftermath of it, but Frankie kept, single-handedly, I shouldn't say single-handedly, but with, with the help of Pam and a few other people, Frankie kept the county from being taken over by the state in the summer of 2018. And, you know, I had phone conversations with him because I was curious as to what was happening, and the guy was here at 10 o'clock at night, on a lot of nights, 11 o'clock, trying to get this financial information together. I mean, trying to just get the checkbook to balance. That's what Pike County Government owes Frankie Stacy. He kept the state, can you imagine the largest county in Kentucky if it had been taken over by the state? How bad that would have looked? And keep in mind, right before Frankie became treasurer, the county lost its credit rating. It's one step away from the county being bankrupt, and if you recall, the prior administration was having to borrow money to pay payroll. This court's not had to borrow money, in part because of the decisions that we've made, but we've had good financial guidance from Frankie and Pam and, and Judge Hickman. You know, that's three pretty smart people that we've got to rely on. This just didn't Ray Jones, or Ronnie Robertson, or Jason Tackett, or Brian Booth. We've got some really good people, and I want to thank all of you, Frankie, and particularly you, because I don't think anybody knows, that's outside of county government knows, if it hadn't been for you, the county employees probably wouldn't have been paid. You had county employees that were filing health insurance claims. People don't know this, county employees that filed health insurance claims in 2018 or so, and their claims were denied because somebody had forgot to pay the insurance premium. It's true, isn't it, Frankie? You know, this administration's not forgot to pay its employees health insurance premiums. Now, think about that. If you were a Pike County employee and you went to the doctor and you got a bill because your health insurance was not in force, or you had to have surgery because somebody forgot to pay the insurance premium, or forgot to deposit a million, two, in checks that were laying upstairs, Frankie has made sure, and my only thing I told Frankie when we came in, let's do it right and make sure that we don't have those kind of things happen, and he's not, he's not let the people of this county down, and Frankie, we owe you a tremendous debt of gratitude, not just as a fiscal court, but as, as citizens of Pike County. We, we cannot thank you enough, and the work you've done on this budget has made my job a lot easier, and I greatly appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frankie.
I want to conclude, but just a couple things before we take executive session. There were a lot of rumors going around that, in particular, one part of the counties. A lot of you know that, you know, my dad was in business in Phelps for a long time. He lived there for over 20 years. I've got a lot of friends there. I've got one person in this administration that, from Phelps. They tried to start a rumor that, you know, Phelps Road Lot was being cut down to two people. In fact, every county road lot has the same number of employees. Every county road lot is down to four. That's the same number that they had when Fabian Little was an employee. Brian Booth worked for the county, retired from the county road department. I think, Brian, they had four on the lot at one time. Is that, is that correct? Fabian was telling me at one time they had four. It's not optimal. We would like to have six, or seven, or eight, or 10, but we're living within our means. Phelps Road Lot has the same number that Marbone has, the same number that Robinson Creek, the same number that the Calpine Lot has, same number that Belcher has, the same number that Belfry has. They're all the same. There's nobody being discriminated against, and I just want to put that to rest. Every road lot has the same budget for asphalt, for gravel, for drains, for concrete. Nobody's being singled out here, but we are going to live within our means. As long as I'm county judge, we're going to run the county responsibly and transparently, and we're going to treat everybody the same, whether it's Phelps, or Brushy, or Vergey. Don't matter where you live, you're going to be treated fairly. I wanted to clarify that because I thought it was important. We'll, Fabian can, can talk to us when, at the next court meeting about some of the changes that he's working on, things that we're doing to make sure that we've got coverage. Our road foremen are stepping up. They're going to be doing actually more hands-on work. They're going to have to. They were told that today. They've all agreed to step up and do what's got to be done to get the work done. I also want to thank the Solid Waste crews because they have worked a lot of extra hours. They've lost the inmate labor, and we've had, we've had road department employees, we've got five a week, five to six a week rotating through solid waste to help pick the slack up until we can get the inmate labor program started back up. We don't know when that may be, but we're trying to do our best to make sure that, that the, the garbage is picked up. That's a public health issue. It's imperative that we pick the garbage up. If you don't pick garbage up, it's, it's the way disease gets spread. It causes a blight in our communities, and we are still picking the garbage up. We're still doing the same services. We've had some problems with getting the new routes lined out, but long-term, we think it'll be better off. Those crews are working together, and they put in quite a bit of overtime, but that's also, we're getting that under control as well. So I want to thank both the road crews and the solid waste crews for stepping up on that. So with that being said, we're going to hopefully make this a real quick executive session. Mr. King, would you please instruct the members on executive session?
I've been advised that this is an issue regarding a personnel matter, so we'll need a motion under 61810 subsection F in order to be able to discuss that specific personnel issue.
Is there a motion entering to executive session?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. It is my motion to amend the court order from April 21st, meaning to read that Tony Dodson is still employed as a truck driver at Road Lot 5 at a 3H rate of pay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any question or discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. That brings us to the benediction. Commissioner Booth, would you like to say the benediction for us, sir?
Lord, as we come for you tonight, dear Lord, as we leave this meeting, dear Lord, watch over us as we travel to our homes tonight, dear heavenly Father, and, Lord, watch over the citizens of this county, dear heavenly Father, and help us to make all of the right decisions in this county, and watch over all of those shops through these stores, dear heavenly Father, that they don't come in contact with this virus, dear heavenly Father. In Jesus' name we pray, and amen.
Amen. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. That brings us to the benediction. Commissioner Booth, would you like to say the benediction for us, sir?
Lord, as we come for you tonight, dear Lord, as we leave this meeting, dear Lord, watch over us as we travel to our homes tonight, dear heavenly Father, and, Lord, watch over the citizens of this county, dear heavenly Father, and help us to make all of the right decisions in this county, and watch over all of those shops through these stores, dear heavenly Father, that they don't come in contact with this virus, dear heavenly Father. In Jesus' name we pray, and amen.